All right, folks. How you doing? Welcome to the May 12th, 2016, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Allison, would you like to call it all?
I'd love to. Uh, Hetzke.
Here.
Kenauer.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurseyer.
Here.
Saintster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Wyser.
Here.
All right. Zach, I want you, we got minutes?
Yes. Minutes were provided from the meeting on the 28th of April. If there's any questions, concerns, comments, corrections from the board, if not, I understand vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have Kenauer and Tidings.
Okay, Hetzke.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Kenauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Fantastic. To our one and only table item for Baby Landing Project, we do not have any major updates or site plan revisions or the reports that were included that we needed for the table resolution. However, we did receive a letter from the Penfield Fire Department. The chief submitted a letter regarding the emergency access easement at the top of the hill coming out of Woodhaven. We did give a copy of that to the applicant and they're reviewing that along with our PRC comments to address what the fire department requested. Basically, they were looking for anything, basically a road structure that could support their heaviest fire truck. So again, that's in the hands of the applicant.
They're looking for full payment.
Exactly.
Yes. That's at their request and it's up to the applicant to show if they can provide anything else as an alternative as they had suggested in their public hearing for that GeoGrid system, the grass-like surface. So I'm not sure where they're going with that, but when we find out, we'll pass it along to the board. Until then, we can take a vote to continue to table it. If there aren't any other questions, I don't need to jump ahead. I'm sorry.
So move.
Second.
Okay, uh, moved by Burton, seconded by Kenauer. Thank you. Uh, Hetzke.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Kenauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
All right. We have four miscellaneous items to talk about. Uh, the first is that Platinum Office Complex on Route 250. In the back of the building, okay, let's zoom out in a little perspective. The rear portion of the building that was most recently approved and constructed, uh, they've requested to add a concrete pad outside the building in this location and take away this parking spot and stripe it in so that they can have a location for delivery vans to park and offload deliveries, whatever's coming in through this proposed entry door at the building. Uh, there is a photo already where they're beginning to frame out the door. There is the existing sidewalk here. So they'd be adding a portion here to basically give you a smooth transition between the vehicle area and offloading. This has come before the board as a site plan modification. The parking requirements were not impacted by this. They were approved with more parking than was required by code. So taking a parking spot away does not impact any approvals that was given by the town. I don't think I'm missing anything unless there's any other questions about it. What is the board's deal?
We just had one question, the bollards around the transformer.
Sure.
Um, the applicant should ensure from RGENE that the appropriate clearance is there from the north side of that transformer.
We pass that along to the applicant.
Okay, so, uh...
Basically, uh, any approval from the board would be captured in the minutes and we would add that, obviously, here and be captured and pass it on to the applicant as well. If there's anything else.
Somebody want to move to, I guess, conditionally approve it based on the...
Yeah, I'll move to conditionally approve it based on our comments.
Oh, seconded.
Kenauer and Tidings.
Thank you. Um, Hetzke.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Kenauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Allison.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, number two, back to Burger King. Just submitted today, our, uh, is a exterior modification request, building elevations from the Burger King on Penfield Road at the corner of Panorama, at the corner of Panorama Plaza. Currently, the building has the awning around it and they're proposing to remove the awning and, uh, put up the new corporate standard look with this elevation surrounding the building with some, uh, some stucco treatments, brushed metal finishes, brick treatments, um, new canopies, new signage. I do not have a color rendering, but the details of this, uh, building elevation set did come with the table explaining all the colors and materials that come with it. I didn't see anything that stood out to me as alarming. Much of it was earth tone in nature and along with the metal features in those areas around the windows and the doors that were from the bottom up.
Any pictures or examples of locations that were done this?
They did not provide any pictures with it because they went to the building department and the building department gave that to us today as we should be able to bring this to the board tonight in a miscellaneous item. If the board's not comfortable making any decisions, we can ask for more information.
I think we were getting that. We didn't ask them for colored rendering because we asked everybody else.
Yep, I would agree.
Very possible, we can do that.
What about the exhaust and venting in the roof? Wasn't this, uh, a concern at one point?
Can you switch back?
Yeah.
No, this is... That'll be of a similar design.
That might be the time.
With the stone. It's not the same, but it's similar.
Do you know exactly where that Burger King is?
Same thing.
You don't ever go there.
Sometime thing and the exhaust and the roof.
Yeah, Doug, can you switch back to the, um...
It's because it's next to the salad company.
Elevation drawing.
Right next to Coriander.
Light, light, light. Check out. Sorry, I'm just reading things as I go. It looks like they provide the necessary screening for the roof appliances.
I think it's more of a filter issue.
I don't know, I think it was letting a lot of stuff out.
Oh, is in like you saw the exhaust more or less?
Yeah. Seems to recall that they...
That's something we could pass along to the building department. I'm not sure if they're going to be...
You know, well, now might be the time to address it and see if, I mean, if it needs updating, if they're going to be, uh, incurring costs to remodel the building, they might want to address those issues.
Right, I think there's actually one of the plans is part of, is a floor plan. Well, that's a very close-up picture.
You can't see any research from here, you see the RTU.
Three letter acronym for rooftop unit, maybe?
How many years has that building been? Did we go off yet?
Doug, can you look at the floor plan drawing? Wall sections, probably. Nope.
They gave us one.
Go to the title black. Go back to that drawing and look at the title black.
That was it?
Oh.
No, not the remodel, the one that shows the, uh...
There you go.
Building sections.
They are doing interior layout too, so it might be, I think, you said an opportunity to look at that.
I would suggest that.
Nope.
No.
It may have already been, you know, updated from all I know.
Okay. And ask that of the building department to get back to that.
Is it separate parcel? It listed as 1979.
Can you zoom in on that burial again?
So Burger King is doing this remodel or the new owners of the plaza?
Burger King.
You see the plan, you see Carols Corporation.
Who was it?
Yeah. Carols, member Carols.
Oh, yeah.
Carols formed Burger King and then they fell out, except for one. There's still one in the country.
Carols.
It's in Clarence, New York.
St. Clarence?
They still have Carols in those places.
1979. 1979.
Oh, it actually is.
What, putting out, sipping out hot air? We can get the cover.
Okay, so I have requests for colored renderings and maybe an example that's been built, uh, as well as to review the rooftop mechanics and the exhaust systems. Just at least a comment for the building department to consider. I can get those information, the board can revisit that at a future meeting.
I mean, aerial again, I wonder if there's something they can do with the queuing on the drive up because sometimes when you're coming in on the bottom right, the cars are backed up into that...
Into the parking lot?
Throw weight there, yeah.
Well, farther, about, yeah, in there.
That's a good point, that's a good point, Bob.
I don't know if that's, if there can be some more... I don't know how they do it.
This is a very awkward drive-through. She's supposed to enter here, turn around 180 degrees and exit here.
Maybe if they exited around the other way and queued counterclockwise, I don't know.
Are you talking about some major structural change?
Can you go back to that conversation, Doug?
No, actually, he's just talking about striping.
Yeah.
Striping.
Yep.
Looks like, looks like all the...
I thought you said he's going around the other way, though, coming out the way.
They could go around to the northwest. Right now, they have them spilling out onto that little access lane and which is a right turn only out of Panorama Plaza onto, um, Panorama Trail.
So chase the direction of those arrows going the other way and they queue around the building.
Yeah, so there's a perfect example right there of...
So, so where, so how are you going to get around that?
Have them light up on the other side, on the north.
Or could they put the order window a little bit... I will say, this intersection is very interesting to navigate because you have people coming sort of in-ish out there, turning around, coming through here and coming through there.
Yeah, and it's right only off of Panorama Trail and right, and exit.
It's a right in, right out. Although, you can very easily make a left and many people do into there. You're on TV. I'd say you're allowed to, I'd say people do. I witness it as a resident.
Witness?
Witness, I have not done it. I follow all vehicles, best of all.
I know the guy.
No, no, it's not like you small driving.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that was off the top of my head, but maybe just a look at the traffic flow.
I'll take that, I'll take that back to staff to take a look at that and see what we can recommend and what options we have through this request.
It's a, it's a very valid comment. I just have to ask, is, is a site plan modification application for a change in the facade...
Does it justify all that?
...in connection to...
If it was a site plan modification, that would be a comment that could be addressed in it. This was just not really, haven't exactly taken it as a site plan modification, just as exterior renovations, more or less. But again, I can, I can take this back to at least our staff and see if there's an option for that.
Yeah, I think that's a...
At least ask the question.
Yeah, I think it's a...
I mean, if this is an opportunity, then it's an opportunity.
I don't know what you think about that. Maybe you could consult with the staff.
Yeah, we should look into it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we could get more...
We'll get more information and get back to you.
All right, do we need to vote on this? Or we don't need to do?
This is almost an FYI.
All right, no votes.
Let's follow up on that, though.
Yes, yeah, I got it right here with you, Scott.
Next.
Next. June. As a correction to our last meeting on the 28th, Mark had mentioned that Charles Finney School is looking to do a fieldhouse addition in the back for a site plan for that. That application has actually been passed on to the town board, has been submitted, but it's in the town board's hand because this property's in the Four Corners District, outside of planning board. So that's where it's going. That was just a brief update and correction to what was said. We claimed it to be an application for June. It's now going to the town board.
Well, as a, as another board, we already provided some comments, so maybe they could benefit from our little bit of dialogue last week about that, which is favorable.
Right, and we have, and we have our comments and PRC generating right now as well and we can incorporate that since it's probably a good avenue to do that. Okay, there's that update. Uh, the last update is regarding the Okinapplesideery. There was a, well, let me start by saying this. Yesterday, last evening, the town board met in a work session, um, with town attorneys to review the proposed use as it relates to the conservation easement that's on the property. Board, uh, received a letter from the applicant's attorney as well that we've included tonight for you as a hard copy and drop. From their attorneys is a letter, basically, their justification for the use as it relates to the easement and New York State Ag markets laws. So we printed a hard copy for everyone's reference. The town board at this point tabled the discussion and will be speaking about it again at the 25th in their work session. I do not know if a decision will come from that meeting, but they wanted to take the information that was discussed last night, basically, review those items and then come back on the 25th to possibly conclude, conclude the item and put it to a vote about how they feel the proposed use would or would possibly meet the intensity easement.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
If, and if that did go, if we do have a decision from the town board on the 25th, uh, this would potentially be an application for the planning board at the July meeting, just the way it works out with legal notices and deadlines for advertising.
Depending on how they...
Depending on a decision on the 25th.
Okay.
That is all I have for table items and miscellaneous.
Anything else before we recess, before the public hearing? All right, then, uh, I guess we will recess and reconvene at 7:00.
Nice one, John.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 12th, 2016, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Like all our meetings, we will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming. Uh, we have, uh, one item on our agenda tonight. It is a subdivision application. I would like to welcome troop, Boy Scout Troop 122 in attendance here tonight and encourage scouts of every age to always attend Penfield Planning Board meetings. We welcome your, and Girl Scouts. I don't want to cut anybody out. Process is, uh, applicant will, uh, present their idea or application and then the board will ask questions. Once that's all complete, we open it up to questions from the audience and, um, then it comes back to the board and we'll finish up that way. So Zach, if you could read the first and only item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one. Edwin Summerhays, 2509 Browncoff Boulevard, Suite 209 Rochester, New York, 14625. Request under Chapter 250, 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for final subdivision approval to subdivide the current two-acre parcel located at 1426 Jackson Road, Penfield, New York, 14526 to create two new one-acre parcels. The property is now reformally owned by Mahatma Kaur Oysterly and Charles Oysterly and is owned RR1. Application number 16P-0006, SPL number 110.01-1-3.4. And I just have to make a correction that the legal notice that was advertised had an application number that read 16P-0005 and that has since been corrected to 0006. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, I'm Ed Summerhays and if I may take a minute, I'd also like to welcome the Boy Scout troops and let you know that if they need some help with their surveying merit badge, I know just the person you need to talk to, so... If you don't mind a little plug and it's a great badge to get. So now, on the...
Business cards on the back table, are they?
I am here on my, on the behalf of my client, Mahatma Kaur, and the purchaser, Brett. Uh, and basically, what we're trying to do in this application is to restore what was done back in 1988. Up on the board behind me, I have the original subdivision when this is a three-lot craft subdivision and the two parcels on the left represent the lands that Mrs. Oysterly owns. And, but what we had done at some time, a long time ago, we had joined those together. Now she has an interested person who would like to live there and, uh, so we'd like to subdivide that. So it's very simple. At this particular time, we're just kind of restoring, putting back what was once there. Uh, I have received only two sets of comments so far, one from Monroe County Planning Department, three comments on it, but two, three, and four are no comments. So the one comment was that the Monroe County must check the monumentation to make sure that there's no monuments within the area. Actually, it's kind of a boilerplate statement. We've already have our subdivision tied into the New York State Geodetic System. We have our geodetic coordinates on here and there are no monuments, so it's just, that will, that process will be completed when we file a map in the clerk's office. And then the second comment we have is from our town planning department and they've asked us to either remove or locate, relocate the, what I have labeled as the open shed on that vacant lot. It's got a lot two. And, uh, when I contacted Mrs. Oysterly about this, I, I got a lesson in Japanese culture and Japanese gazebos because I know when I did the survey, it was a very beautifully landscaped lot and what I didn't realize was that this whole landscaping, including this structure, is really a Japanese gazebo that is part of the landscaping. And I know we emailed to the town earlier today a number of pictures of this. Did you get those? And you have those? If you don't, we have some that I can, I can pass to you if you don't, but I think, I think the town...
She has more expensive paper than I do.
Oh, and here's, here's some more.
Do them in series.
So what we would request that, 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 that the request to have that, that structure removed, if that can be waived for the approval of this because it's really not a shed, it's enclosed, it's open on the ones, it's only enclosed on three sides, it's open, it's really kind of like a patio, a protected patio for sitting out there and looking at the pond that's behind it. And you can see from the pictures that it's an awful lot of extensive landscaping around it and to remove it would really be kind of a detriment to the property. And as I recall, driving by it, as a matter of fact, I don't even think I can see the shed from the road because there's so much landscaping out at the road. So as I recall, I don't even, I'm not even sure you can see it from the road. If you can, it'd be only a glimpse. So I don't think it would be a detriment to leave that in place and still approve this. So that really completes, this is a very easy project. That completes mine. I can, I can have either one of them come up to answer any questions you might have more specific to the, uh, to the gazebo or the project.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of questions either. I was out there this afternoon though, Ed, as I mentioned it to you, that I met the neighbors here at 1434, Tom and Liz, I believe. And, you know, they're very nice neighbors and they love you next door and they said they weren't opposed to it all, so just to let you know, make that a part of the record. So, um, my only really question was, I guess, once the, that subdivided, uh, the new owner there, Brett, maybe, what are you going to, like, share the driveways going in and out of there? The driveway, how's, how they going to, you know?
Uh, at this time, I don't know. I don't know if you have a plan for driveways. I would assume that it would be required by the, uh, because this is a county road, I would assume that they would require a separate curb cut for this parcel, so...
If you could come up here. Come up, introduce yourself and...
I'm Mahatma Kaur Oysterly, the owner of the property that I want subdivided. When I went to the planning board a couple of months ago to get information about this, I had asked about the driveways because initially, when we bought the property, we had bought the one acre with the intention of building on it and then we ended up buying the house that I'm living in now. So then we combined the two properties. And initially, it was set up that we shared the driveway, this driveway, with the people in the back and there was supposed to be a, you know, a little common area there to come in. And so then, when I went upstairs and talked to them about this, because it's now been landscaped, there's mature trees and they said because the property, we've been there 22 years, would probably not be an issue to locate the driveway where it would be more feasible, which Brett and I had talked because there's plannings here. This, in this area would be a more...
Suitable location.
Suitable location. The house across the street they're building, The house across the street they're building, it would be close to those, that driveway, so it would seem rather than to.
Staggered.
Stagger them, it would make more sense to do it that way.
And the plans, are you guys gonna keep that pond in place there? That's beautiful.
Yes.
I mean, I've been there a couple of times over the years for weddings, pictures, I believe. He used to allow people to go in there and take pictures.
Yeah, we've had weddings there, the RPO has done benefit concerts there. We've, we're, it's a very well-known garden in the Monroe County area. It's one of the largest Japanese gardens in this area and as I said, it's, it's been well-used over the years. So that shelter is part of the original design of the gardens. And Brett is the one who has done all the detail work, the bamboo work on that shelter and the different structures on there. So it's apropos that he's, wants to buy the, the lot.
Where would you propose putting a house on that? That's, that's been a question that, you know, I think everybody agrees that the gazebo's beautiful and, and the property's beautiful. We're just curious to, to see how you would maintain that and.
Sure.
There's an open area.
Yes. My name's Brett Porter and I'm the one interested in buying the property. I wanted to step back a second to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Issue too.
Sure.
I spoke with Tom and Liz and he reminded also that there is something in the past rules that the beginning of his driveway as another option also has a, a shared element to it.
Right, that's it, yeah.
So, yeah, besides choosing a whole nother location. The house, there's a big clearing in the center of it, just all lawn. And that, if I built a house, that's where I would propose to. And I just grabbed something I did when I, two years ago, first got interested in it and she was deciding whether to move or not. And I can just show you that if you.
Sure.
Wanted. And ignore the scale, because I was thinking, so here's the pond, here's the shelter.
Okay.
And that's the open field area.
Yeah. You'd be right here?
It was a nice open, let's see, yes, exactly. That whole open area would be where I would contemplate a house. And like I said, there's a shared potential driveway if needed a leach field.
Right.
Or if things change by that.
I'm just gonna ask him.
See the house across the street, things sometimes change.
Brett, could you try and just point that out on the map up there, just so there's a.
Here, thank you.
So you're captured on the microphone better.
Sure. Let me get my bearings a moment. So on this map, here, okay, so it would be right in this location. That's all open grass. There's a few berms here, there's another berm here, and you have the shelter, the pond. Lots of stone as you saw.
Right.
And what's called a Torii gate, both on a pathway and also within the pond itself. So that would be the most appropriate area. More than likely, you know, unless you found the right delicate builder, some of the berm that's within that area might need a little chopping in order to accommodate a home or, so, that, that would be the area.
Your plan would be to maintain the pond and the landscaping as is?
My, my, oh, yeah, my plan right now is to be a gardener and bring it back to the, I mean, when you look at it, it looks beautiful, but from a Japanese gardener's perspective, there's a lot of care that's needed, a lot of pruning, all the stonework is, you know, with our winters is tilted, I mean, there's, it took twenty, twenty-one years to bring it to what it was. It'll take a while to restore it to its original beauty and, and then my own touches might continue, you know, in the gardening. A learning process also.
Okay, thank you and thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions? Would anyone in the audience like to speak about this application?
You can speak positively.
Do you want to speak from here?
No, you can come.
Give us your name and address.
So my name is Jean Oswald, I live at fourteen twenty-four Jackson. So we're a couple of doors down, but my partner Linda Shriver and I just want to say for the record, we, we vote wholeheartedly for this.
Okay.
Yeah. I am curious what number your residents will have.
I was wondering that myself.
Who decides that?
Post office.
Is it post office or the town?
Post office.
Post office.
Conversation, yeah.
The two of you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Any other questions from the board? Any final comments?
No, I.
Mister surveyor?
No, we're good.
Plug for the Boy Scouts?
Plug for the Boy Scouts, great profession, lot of fun, meet lots of people. You're there from the beginning of the project all the way to the end of the project, so. People know, get to know you quite well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you, everyone, for coming and we'll call this hearing closed. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thanks.
I think we're, I think we're back on live TV.
Yep. Okay, so, following that public hearing, we asked the questions of where a house may potentially go, they did indicate that. Got some more clarification about the existing structure on the property. I just want to bring up through the board that the, thank you, Mike. That the existing structure on the property, the building department would classify as a structure currently under our code. And our code does not allow accessory structures to be the primary structure on a, on a property like that. Primary use has to be a single-family home in this case. So what staff has discussed and what we've done in the past in situations like, like this where it is just a subdivision, and Mike can speak more to this, is we, we take a letter of credit to relocate the shed. Mike, if you want to explain that a little bit.
Yeah, well, there was another project that we had that, you know, they did a re-sub of land and there was an existing barn on the property and so there was no primary structure. So what we did is we held a letter of credit of a certain amount and, you know, waited for that barn to be relocated and we gave them a timeframe of a year or whatever to do that and, you know, it worked out. They, they moved the shed, that building and so what we were proposing was that allow them to keep the shed there and then, but we would take, you know, a letter of credit amount so that if they didn't come back within a certain timeframe with a site plan to show a primary structure that we would have money to relocate the shed ourselves.
To bring it into compliance.
So if I may.
The board that set that timeframe.
Ed, do you know what the purchaser's timeframe is?
He's talking a couple of years, but there's no time, nothing indefinite, but I, I'm thinking two to three years. If, if we have the flexibility, I would recommend a three-year letter of credit if, if that's acceptable. I don't know what's getting out there, unless we do it at two and then have it renewed.
We can always do one and then, and then.
It can be revisited.
Come back for extensions.
Right, yep. That would be my suggestion.
Typically, that's what we would do is maximum a year and just put a clock, put a reminder on it for us, his staff, to bring it back to the board each year just to, to reevaluate it, that should revisit the situation.
I don't have a problem with that one.
Okay.
That seems reasonable. Again, it's in the effort to, it's basically an effort in good faith that we're not gonna make them take a chainsaw to it to, to move the gazebo, but, you know, obviously they explained it's kind of an integral part to their efforts there to preserve the garden and enhance the garden. So it's understandable what they're trying to go through and why they requested it to be there. It's just a unique circumstance because they need to make a lot out of it and it is class, according to the building department in my discussions today, it is classified as a str, as an accessory structure, which we do not allow unless we use the letter of credit method, which we have done in the past, to work towards that end goal of seeing a single-family house there. Is there's any, how the board feels about that again?
No.
Then I do, Chief.
Yeah, it's fine.
So you want to add to the approval resolution?
Yes.
We can add that as a condition of approval in the draft template that was provided as well. Any other issues?
Make a motion and.
Oh, we, there's two things, yep, we have the.
Yeah, the EAF.
If there are, yeah, if there are no other issues, we have the EAF that was presented in the, in the drop as well as the draft approval, so.
I'll make the motion to approve that first.
I'll second.
Terry and Kenauer? Hetske?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
And then the resolution with conditions?
Correct, I'll make the motion to approve that, please.
I'll second. Terry and Bob.
Okay, Hetske?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. That concludes this meeting.
We have any other?
Any other agenda items? Nothing?
No.
How about? Work session, everybody here, the work session concludes. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And we'll send out another reminder email just if there are any changes in schedules to get ahead, as we usually do. Okay?
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Try to enjoy the rest of the nice weather.
Before it rains tomorrow. Tonight.